Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Sound Recovery Services LLC is proposing to establish a new healthcare facility. Specifically, it seeks to establish a new day treatment and outpatient behavioral healthcare facility for adults with moderate to severe substance use disorders and co-occurring mental disorders in Bridgeport, Connecticut. The anticipated capital expenditure is $45,000. Today is September 5th, 2024. My name is Daniel Chuka. OHS Executive Director DJ Griffith. Excuse me, she is now Commissioner as of this past legislative session. OHS Commissioner DJ Griffith has authorized OHS General Counsel Anthony Casa Grande to designate hearing officers for CON matters, and he has designated me to serve as the hearing officer for this matter, to rule on all motions and to recommend findings of fact and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. This hearing is being held online utilizing the Zoom video conference platform as authorized by Connecticut General Statute Section 1-225A. In accordance with this statute, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his or her or their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or a series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 19A-639A-F2. Although this does not constitute a contested case under the Uniform Administrative Procedure Act, the manner in which OHS conducts these proceedings will be guided by the UAPA provisions and the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies at Sections 19A-9-24 at SEC. Although I will be asking the majority of the questions, Office of Health Strategy staff is also present to assist me in gathering facts related to this application and may also be asking the applicant witnesses questions. At this time, I'm going to ask each staff person with me to identify themselves with their name, spelling of their last name, and OHS title, starting with Stephen Lazarus.
Good morning, Stephen Lazarus, L-A-R-U-S, and I oversee the Certificate of Need program.
Steve, we are having some difficulty with your mic again.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. I don't, I just want to make sure that the applicants can hear you.
It's a little bit, it's, it sounds like you're underwater.
I'll work on that.
In, in all likelihood, he won't have that many questions. So when he does speak, he will, I'll make sure that he speaks up or clarifies or speaks louder. So the next person on the list is Annie.
Good morning. My name is Annie Fiala, Ephesian Frank, A-I-E-L-L-A, and I am the CON Team Lead.
And Ormond? Ormond, are you with us? Did he drop off?
Aside previously, but I don't seem to see him now.
I will introduce him, Ormond Clark, last name spelled C-L-A-R-K-E. And perhaps someone can fill me in on what his exact title is. I don't want to botch it. He's, he's one of the analysts. I'm just not sure.
He's a healthcare analyst?
Okay.
But I can see that an issue.
And then next would be Jess.
Excuse me. Good morning. Jessica Rival. I am a healthcare analyst with the Office of Health Strategy, and my last name is spelled R-I-V and Victor A-L.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Ormond Clark. I'm a healthcare analyst. And my last name is spelled C-L-A-R-K-E.
Thank you, Ormond. Also present is our office's paralegal, Fay Fentis, who is assisting with the hearing logistics, gathering the names for public comment and providing miscellaneous other support. Speaking of public comment, sign up for public comment has started. If you would like to make a statement at today's hearing, please put your name in the Zoom chat, and we will be happy to provide you with the opportunity to speak at a later time. Sign up will continue until the public comment portion is scheduled to begin, which will occur immediately following most of the technical portion of the hearing. I say most because there are just a few items that will occur after that, but it's, it's essentially after the technical portion of the hearing today. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicants, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will also be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to OHS are available for review through our Certificate of Need portal, which is accessible on the OHS CON webpage. In making my proposed decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with Section 19A-639 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you in the course of entering this hearing, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the Zoom meeting. I am going to start by going over the exhibits and the items of which I am taking administrative notice, and then I will ask if there are any objections. The CON portal contains the pre-hearing table of record in this case. At the time of its filing on Tuesday, exhibits were identified in the table from A to R. OHS staff, do you have any additional exhibits that you wish to enter into the record at this time?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And the applicant is hereby notice that I am taking administrative notice of the following: the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan, as well as its supplements, the facilities and services inventory, the OHS acute care hospital discharge database, all payer claims database claims data, and hospital reporting system, that is HRS financial and utilization data. I may also take administrative notice of other prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant to this matter, but which have not yet been identified. If applicable, I will provide the applicant with an opportunity to respond to anything so noticed. Counsel for the applicant, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Gladly. Good morning, Hearing Officer Chuka. My name is Erica Nolan, here with Sager and Slossburg, and now here on behalf of the applicant, Sound Recovery Services LLC.
Thank you. Do you have, let's start with the exhibits. Do you have any objections to the exhibits that I identified in the table of record?
Generally, no. I will just note for the record that Exhibit P that was submitted contains a minor inaccuracy in that the town of Durham is included, which is not in our proposed service area. But we'll just note that for the record, we're not, you know, going to make a big deal about it by any means. Just want to note that that was included.
Okay. So after the hearing, we can prepare a corrected version of this.
Sure.
I'll probably, I'll give it a new exhibit letter just so that we have clarity of the record. So that will be, well, I'm not sure what letter that'll be because we may have some, some late files and such, but it'll probably be S. S as in Samuel.
That's perfectly fine.
Let's see. With respect to the items that I took administrative notice of, do you have any objections to those?
No objection.
Thank you. And do you have any additional exhibits that you would wish to enter at this time?
We do not at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I would like to advise the applicant that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed in the course of your application and completeness letters and pre-file testimony. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed the docket, and we will do so again before issuing a decision. Anyone attending today should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting remotely during the proceedings. All participants and the public should mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off record or take a break. Please be advised that although we will stop the recording, the video and the audio will likely continue. So anything that you say or do may be visible or heard by other participants at the hearing. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, if there are any, any public officials who, who wish to make comments, I may take them out of order. And as I mentioned, registration for public comment has already begun. If you would prefer to submit written comment, you can do so to CONcomment@ct.gov. And I would also ask that the applicant's witnesses be available after the public comment as OHS may have additional follow-up questions based on a public comment.
They will be so available.
Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before we start?
Not from the applicant.
Thank you. So we're going to proceed to the technical portion. Attorney Nolan, would you like to make an opening statement?
I will reserve my comments for the end if, if it, if that's all right with the hearing officer.
That's perfectly acceptable.
Great.
So we are going to start with Phil, I believe. So can, Phil, can you please identify yourself by name and title?
Sure. It's Phil DiGennaro, D-I-G-E-N-N-A-R-O. I am a managing member of Sound Recovery Services. I reside in Trumbull, Connecticut. My pre-file testimony has been filed and.
But before you get into your, your statement, I, I do have to put you under oath.
Oh, sure.
So please raise your right hand, as you've already done. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your pre-file testimony and the evidence that you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I am sorry I interrupted you. You can proceed whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'm not, not a problem.
Well, let me just do a few foundational things just to establish your pre-file testimony, Mr. DiGennaro. Did you prepare or supervise in the preparation of your pre-file testimony, which has been admitted as Exhibit K?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any additions, clarifications, or modifications to your pre-file testimony that's admitted as Exhibit K?
No, I think it speaks for itself.
And is it true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
And do you adopt the information contained in Exhibit K as your testimony here today?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. DiGennaro, I, I think we were about to get into, can you tell us a little bit about your background and how this is brought?
Yeah, sure. So I'm born and raised in Bridgeport, Connecticut, educated in Connecticut. I've worked for the last, I would say, thirty-five to forty years primarily in Connecticut, primarily in real estate development and startups of certain, of different businesses. So, you know, as is in my testimony, we've had experience in our family with substance abuse. It's something we care deeply about. And my role in this venture is primarily financial as an investor. The folks that'll be operating the center, I know very well. Obviously, one of them is my son. It's people that he works with currently up in Massachusetts. And, you know, I think it's a need that we have in the state that, you know, really, really has to be addressed and filled. At the same time, it's, you know, it's, it's a business, and it needs to make viable sense for it to be successful. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. But for now, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DiGennaro.
Sure.
Would you like to have the rest of your witnesses come in one by one at this time, or?
Sure, I'm happy to do that, and that way we can just, whatever questions the office has, we can address those depending on which witness it's most applicable to.
Okay.
Great. So I'm just going to mute and turn my camera off, and we'll switch our witnesses out, and I will be right back.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there we go. I started talking without muting myself. So we are back, and we have James DiGennaro with us as well as our next witness.
Thank you. So, Mr. DiGennaro, can you please give us your name, spelling of your last name and your title, or your relationship to the, to the project?
Sure. James DiGennaro, D-I-G-E-N-N-A-R-O. I am a member as well.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your pre-file testimony and the evidence that you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do.
I have landscaping people right outside my door, so I apologize if you can hear that.
That's okay. We normally have construction right outside my building that has gotten picked up on so many Zoom calls, so I understand entirely.
I can still hear you. I just want to make sure that you can still hear me.
We can hear you.
So, Mr. DiGennaro, you can, or Attorney Nolan, did you have any preparatory remarks for him as well?
Sure, sure. I'll just ask him to adopt his, his testimony. Did you prepare or supervise in the preparation of your pre-file testimony, which has been admitted as Exhibit L, which I have a copy in front of the witness?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you have any additions, clarifications, or modifications to your pre-file testimony that has been admitted as Exhibit L?
I do not.
And is it true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you adopt the information contained in Exhibit L as your testimony here today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. DiGennaro, can you tell us a little bit about your background and how it relates to this project?
Sure. So like my father, I grew up in Trumbull, Connecticut, in the Bridgeport area. I'm someone who's personally been affected by this disease. A number of times I've tried to battle this thing throughout the past just shy of a decade from when I was probably about twenty years old. Looking for treatment myself, multiple friends, close people to me who have also suffered from this addiction. I'm coming here today just to kind of give my, my personal experience, say I've lived through this thing. It is very real in, in the area that I come from, in the surrounding area. I just remember times where it was time to look for help and kind of seek guidance personally for battling this thing, and both in my area and from like a stigma standpoint, this was not talked about. And from a resource standpoint, I, the best guess I had was to go on Google and, and look around for, you know, addiction treatment centers near me. Eventually, I had been relocated to Massachusetts, which I currently reside in now. And there were some folks up there that really showed me the way that there was a, with a, with a people-oriented approach, treating me like a human being. I was shown the way as to how to, how to get a grip on my addiction and to be shown there was hope at the end of this thing. I wasn't the only guy who came from Trumbull, Connecticut, or, or other states, or, or in my area, who could be helped in this sense. I like to say these folks also tricked me into falling in love with the work, which I, I currently am. I work up there in Massachusetts, currently at a treatment center, just for clients, some administrative stuff. And there's something about peer-to-peer interaction, being in the same shoes as the folks that you're serving, that really matters.
And, Mr. DiGennaro, how do you, how will your experience be beneficial to those in the Bridgeport and greater Fairfield and New Haven County community?
Yeah, so having grown up in the area, I know how real it is. I know that this thing does not discriminate whether it comes to race, demographic, social, economic status. And that's just from being in my personal experience.
And that is all we have from Mr. DiGennaro at this time, if the hearing officer has any questions? Or we can switch out for Mr.?
Yeah, I, I, I do have questions. I'm just not sure who, who they will be directed to. So I think let's move on to Mr. Rockholtz, and then we can move on to my questions afterwards.
Gladly. So we will just, I will switch those witnesses out, and we will be right back.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Mr. Rockholtz here with me as well.
Thank you. Mr. Rockholtz, can you please spell your last name and identify your, your title and your relationship to this project?
Yes, it's Peter Rockholtz. It's R-O-C-K-H-O-L-Z. It's in zebra. I am serving currently as the compliance officer, as a consultant to Sound Recovery Services. I am not an owner. And following this process, the board will appoint me as Executive Director to make sure that this project goes ahead in its quality and compliance.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence that you provided in your pre-file testimony and the evidence that you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. And Ms. Nolan, did you have any comments for him?
Sure, I will just, similarly, just ask him to adopt his pre-file testimony. Mr. Rockholtz, did you prepare or supervise in the preparation of your pre-file testimony, which has been admitted as Exhibit M?
Yes, I did.
And do you have any additions, clarifications, or modifications to your pre-file testimony admitted as Exhibit M?
No, I didn't.
Is it true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, it is.
And do you adopt the information contained therein as your testimony here today?
I do.
I have no further questions for Mr. Rockholtz. I will allow him to take the floor.
Okay, thank you. Hearing Officer Chuka, good to see you, and members of the OHS staff, some of whom I've worked with over the last several years. Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to testify here. My intent is to do a couple of things. One is to provide support for this project. I think it's a very important one. And to respond in summary to the issues that were raised and, and to introduce myself. I'm going to start off by saying today is September 5th, which is a very important day for me. It was fifty-one years ago today that I started working in addictions here in Fairfield County, in my hometown of Norwalk. I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to work in a long-term residential program that my little brother was in from age fourteen to sixteen, and then was given the opportunity to start as a trainee, having to live in for six months and learn about myself and about what I can contribute to others. That program in Norwalk, BeTom Center, saved my little brother's life, and it saved my life and put me on a career path that I decided to follow for the next fifty or so years. In, in terms of the work that I've done, I sort of want to kind of establish myself here as a national expert, which is my role. I say national expert because it seems like you can't be an expert in your own state, so I'm not really acknowledged in Connecticut. And maybe, you know, I'll give you my background, and you can judge for yourselves. So I worked for about twenty-five years in a number of nonprofit residential, long-term residential programs in Connecticut. They no longer exist. They've been kind of regulated out of existence here in Connecticut and were part of the backbone of Connecticut's wonderful nonprofit addiction treatment network. And Connecticut is eighty-five percent services for SUD in the nonprofit sector, the highest in the country. And so I was a part of that for about twenty-five years. So I then moved to work in prisons, providing support and guidance to set up drug treatment in prisons on behalf of the Department of Justice nationally. And also worked as a consultant for the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, providing support for states and guiding states in their responses to the opioid epidemic and to improve treatment for opioids. I worked in, as a consultant, in thirty states. I then was asked to serve as, in the Office of Deputy Commissioner for Addictions for the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, DEMS, under Governor Ralph, four or five years where I was responsible for all of the community services in entire addictions arena in Connecticut and also community mental health services. So I kind of, I'd already known everybody. It's a, Connecticut's a small town. We all know each other, and have for many years. So, but I had, I was responsible for the, the state system. And then took the model that we developed in Connecticut for the recovery-oriented systems of care to, to other states to help them become more recovery-oriented. In terms of training, I have a master's degree in social work. I was formerly faculty at Yale School of Medicine and currently faculty at Columbia School of Social Work, my alma mater, where I supervise graduate students. So that's, that's my background in a nutshell. I, I want to talk a little bit about the model that this applicant is proposing here. It's a model that's been emerging over the last ten or so years, which is essentially a partial hospital program, PHP, which is the day treatment program with affiliated available supervised supportive silver housing, not required, but available. This is a model that I proposed to Governor Ralph in two thousand and seven as a solution in the mental health arena, but also in the substance use disorder arena as an alternative to residential treatment, because residential treatment was deemed to be too costly and not enough people were able to be certain of that. So this is an early model that was proposed a long time ago. So this is an early model that was uh I proposed a long time ago. At the same time, uh, Dr. David Mealy, uh, who I became acquainted with, uh, had proposed a similar model. Um, on essentially unbundling residential treatment, the 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 treatment need from the housing need. Uh, in in which was interesting because uh David uh was the author of the ASAM criteria. The original placement criteria that that now has been adopted by Connecticut and most other states. In terms of that model, um, my observation and I operate the Connecticut Center for Recovery in Greenwich. Um, it's a, it's a very potent model and I think it uh probably will provide greater uh. Quality and outcomes than residential treatment is able to provide now in their shortened lengths of stay. And so this this model um has has the opportunity to save uh money. But also produce uh greater outcomes. Um, it's a model that I have been working on for the last, you know, ten or so years as a consultant, uh, helping. New organizations uh come into Connecticut, uh, or those that are already in Connecticut. Uh, that are small for-profit groups, similar to this group where it's a a handful of folks in. In recovery who want to give back uh out of gratitude, um, and help others. And um I've had the opportunity to to set up a number of those. Um, so that that's that's essentially the model. I also want to uh say that. And the Fairfield County is my home and I am particularly interested in making sure that it has a network of quality programs. And uh this in my personal mission is to set up a dedicated network of these programs. Um, and one of them is in Greenwich, uh, one was just approved for New Milford, Lantana Recovery Center. And this is in Bridgeport, essentially providing a triangle of three PHPs with recovery housing. Um, and then uh fed in part by a new application that just put into the portal yesterday. That I wrote uh for Haven Health that will um provide a much needed detox uh program. To replace the eighty beds in in part in in New Haven that just suddenly disappeared. Um, from uh uh New Haven, um, and that that program hopefully, if it's approved. Will help to feed these three programs a- as well as CASA in Bridgeport. Which is a wonderful resource for Spanish-speaking clients that Bridgeport is fortunate, well, the state of Connecticut is fortunate to have. And uh so Haven's uh proposal is to provide both English and Spanish language detox services. And then this would be kind of a preferred network of these three programs uh that will help to uh to feed it. Um, so that that's my uh concept and my dream uh for for my home county. So let me talk a little bit about uh the issues that were raised and where we are uh in in that process. Um, so uh. We uh had one set of completeness questions um and that we responded to. And one of the questions had to do with the percentage that we were proposing for Medicaid uh clients. Um, originally we proposed a a five percent uh guesstimate, um, and it's it's just a proposal. Um, and the question back to us, I think it was question five. Um, was uh given that the poverty level in in Bridgeport was so much higher than the state. Twenty-two point nine percent, why were we not um suggesting a higher number of Medicaid? Uh, well, we're not just serving Bridgeport, we're serving the the whole. Service area, primary service area that has this about the same poverty level as state committed roughly ten percent. Um, and so um in looking at that and reconsidering, we said, okay, we'll we'll raise that estimate. To ten percent, um, to meet that. Um, we then uh were opposed with uh this request for a hearing. Um, and again, being asked to talk about. The services we're providing to the Medicaid population. And so there were three questions and I'm just, I'm not gonna repeat my my responses that are attached to my prefile testimony. But just kind of summarize uh the the way we looked at it. Um, that in terms of access from the very beginning, and the applicant uh was intended to uh sign up for the Medicaid program. Um, serve Medicaid clients. Um, and I think uh access uh was pretty much certain of the location, uh, allowed for that. The other thing that's that's very helpful in terms of accessibility to all Medicaid clients now is telemedicine. And so um that that's going to assist um with with access. And hopefully we'll see how it turns out with the DEA and the national policy regarding continuation of tele- telehealth services. Uh, post COVID. So then the other question was about the payer mix, uh, and again, we originally proposed five percent. Um, we up that to ten percent. At least again, we don't know who's gonna come in the door. It could be more, it could be less. We just, we really don't know until we uh we provide the services. But I think the 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 sense we got was that OHS was suggesting that we should consider a twenty-five percent. Um, uh, there's no, I don't know any basis for that. There's, there's, there are no objective requirements that I'm aware of in the statutes. And this is, so there's some subjectivity here in terms of interpreting and determining what's an appropriate level. So I just for the sake of argument, um, took a look at what would uh what would happen if we were to. Move our services from five percent to twenty-five percent uh Medicaid. And essentially, I I I submitted in my testimony uh table. D, um, where it was, you know, just strikingly clear that the company would be out of business on the day that it opened up. And would uh would lose money from that and would not be available uh companies from service. Um, I I think one of the things that was clearly a driver of that. Uh, was the uh the posted rates for uh partial hospital and intensive outpatient. Um, the rate for intensive outpatient was uh one seven, one about one seventy. Five roughly, um, uh, which, you know, would would work for some clients. We would uh, you know, lose money uh at a lower rate that every every uh uh group we ran for I O P. Um, because Medicaid uh limits the participants per group to eight. Uh, where insurance companies do not provide that limit, uh, would be a loss. Um, in terms of the partial hospital, let let me explain it, you know, that uh. Intensive outpatient is three hours of groups per day. Um, the partial hospital is five hours of groups per day. So the the rate for partial hospital is eleven dollars and more. So to think that eleven dollars would cover two additional clinical hours is just, uh, it's just impossible. And it's so until till the DSS raises those rates, uh, this we couldn't possibly consider. Uh, providing the PHP level of care, we could consider the I O P and and application, of course. Um, I did speak with um uh Assistant Director of Medicaid, uh, whether Connecticut was considering. Um, adjusting the rates up as they have with the residential under the eleven fifteen waiver. Um, but they indicated that that was not the case and the federal uh level, it was not happening. As it turns out, I understand DSS studied its own rates and determined that they are the lowest of uh. This the other states in their in their group, um, and uh. They're just, it's just way too low. Um, so we we're we're kind of stuck with. Proposing um a reasonable, I think, uh, ten percent um service and and trying to figure out how that could be affordable. Um, I I I then I kind of tried to understand, um. Why the ten percent was not or apparently not um acceptable. To to be deemed to be meeting the the statutory requirements for the C O N. And I was kind of surprised because uh just two weeks earlier, I received notice of a outright C O N award. For another application that I submitted that uh posed five percent, nearly identical application. And uh it was uh given an outright award uh at at five percent. Um, so I was caught off guard frankly, two weeks later that there was a hearing to talk about raising. Uh, that, um, so I took a look at. Uh, the thirteen very similar um uh projects, programs that involve date treatment for S U D. And co-occurring over the last ten or so years and looked at, was it um consistent with uh those others? Um, what was it about this particular um application or location, proposed location? That um was out of line is trying to understand what the what the issues were. Um, and so looking at table C in my uh um response and attached to my prefile testimony. And with one exception, which was a yeah, an outlier, um, there were a dozen that were approved. That roughly zero to five percent Medicaid, including one two weeks prior. Um, so I had every reason to believe that we were doubling, uh, what were the uh. Accepted uh uh projects, um, uh, so I was a little uh confused. Um, and uh couldn't couldn't quite uh figure that out. I also looked at whether it was the the idea that it was physically located in Bridgeport, which is a, uh, yeah. Clearly a high poverty rate area, but there were two others that also were in high poverty rate uh rate uh cities. That were at uh accepted at zero and five percent. So again, I wasn't really uh clear. Uh, why we were not uh deemed to be um meeting the uh statutory requirements. Just take a look at what else, um. Um, so as I said, uh, you know, the ten percent, I think it's something that this, this is a small uh organization. This is a low volume, you know, low budget operation that can do its fair share. And um to provide services, including um uh. Much lower reimbursement rates through Medicaid plus some reasonable charity care. Um, and uh wants to do its fair share. Um, but when it starts getting beyond that, the continued uh losses of revenue. Or, or, you know, significantly, they're they're below the cost of providing a care, pretty simply put. Um, so uh that's what I have to say about that question. The third, the third issue had to do with um in in network insurance. Um, and I think we were pretty clear from the beginning that that was something that we would be pursuing. Um, and uh in response to that question, I gave what a table E, I think is a pretty detailed. Timeline uh for what we think is realistic for negotiating in network contracts. Um, you know, we don't want to uh start that process immediately until we're up and running. We've got our processes in place. We have quality uh services set up and and staffing and and joint commission accreditation. I mean, there are two things here that I think are important for for this uh program to have established. Before it sits down at a table with an insurance company and negotiate rates, and that is the fact that this is going to be duly licensed. As a substance use disorder treatment facility and a psychiatric date treatment program. Uh, that can provide both, um, and so. It it's a, in in new language, ASAM has adopted um its fourth edition. And so this would be considered H I O T, High Intensity Outpatient Treatment. Which is a new language for partial hospital and recognition that th- this level of care is now being introduced. By freestanding uh programs not associated with hospitals. But it also is, uh, in in addition to that, it's a co-occurring enhanced. Meaning that it has the hi- high capacity to fully treat mental disorders along with the S U D. And so that's an important distinction that um. Want to be responded with a higher insurance rates. The other thing is that we want to get the joint commission accreditation and have those. Uh, in place before we sit down and negotiate. So we're in a much better uh position to negotiate uh reasonable rates. So, um, I think that's all I have for now and this, I understand there may be some questions. And love with, but and you know, I mean, I certainly want to, you know, figure out uh how we can be deemed to be. Uh, in compliance with the uh C O N statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Rockholtz, um, I do have questions, um. My guess is that a lot of them will be directed towards you. So I think it may make sense to to keep you in the hot seat.
Okay.
Um. Do, would you like a five-minute break or?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Um, so we're going to, I I'm sorry, uh, Attorney Nolan, did you have any additional questions? Or or comments for Mr. Rockholtz? Okay.
I I do not. I'm happy to to turn the floor over to um OHS.
Okay, and I I'll give you an opportunity to sort of clarify anything that may come up uh in the course of my questioning as well. So, Mr. Rockholtz, uh, you've spoken to this uh network that you're hoping to establish between Greenwich. New Milford and Bridgeport. Um, do you have any continuing roles at those other locations, the one in New Milford? Uh, or Greenwich?
In in Greenwich, I uh serve as the executive director, again, as a consultant at twenty percent effort. Uh, it's my hometown, um, I, they don't need me for the twenty percent because they did such a good job. Um, but I'm available twenty-four seven for them. And in in the uh New Milford uh program, I currently similarly serve as compliance officer. Um, I uh helped them establish a facility in Charleston, South Carolina. So they have developed an infrastructure where it's likely that my role will uh. Uh, and at some point, because they they have a national compliance officer. And they have a a local executive director, but they're friends and um will probably be working together in some way.
Okay, thank you. And with respect to the application Haven uh in New Haven. Um, you spoke about filing that application yesterday. I mean, we know. It's, it's a long ways from being approved. It's, it's still in the analysis phase. But do you have any expectations as to what your role is going to be there?
Uh, so yeah, yeah, so let me be clear. I did not submit the application. I was submitted by uh Attorney Volpe. Um, uh, I was a writer, um, I was uh submitted in the application. Uh, my resume was submitted uh in the role of compliance officer. Um, I am a consultant there also. Um, it's, it's not certain, but it's probable that I will continue in. That is that or a similar role with them as consultant and going forward.
Okay. So the the culminating question here is, uh, do you think you'll be able to manage all of your different roles? In addition to the role that you anticipate taking on for sound recovery as, uh, I think you said, the executive director?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, um, I'm uh al- also uh involved with a couple of other organizations. Uh, and so uh with my experience, um, I uh have no problems uh serving in all of those roles.
Okay, thank you. Um, you also mentioned in your preliminary comments that Connecticut has either. Uh, formally or informally uh adopted the ASAM continuum of of care model. And then you made reference to a recent change to that, uh, which includes the the high intensity outpatient treatment.
Yes.
Uh, do you know if Connecticut has formally adopted that as well?
Uh, they have not yet. Um, I know that they were very uh strongly committed to. Uh, they have not yet. Um, I know that they were very, uh, strongly committed to, uh, A S A M three. Um, when, when they started the process, um, it does, uh, it, it can be a challenge making changes, uh, in, in a system like that. Um, I hope they adopt it because I think it has some good changes and it includes, among other things, recovery residences. Um, so, you know, I don't know that, uh, what their plans are.
Okay. Um. So I'm going to turn now to, um, the, the issue surrounding the, the anticipated Medicaid volume. Um, so you spoke a little bit to the increase from five percent to 10% earlier. Um, how does that increase in projected Medicaid volume impact sound recovery's projected charity care allotment, um, that scholarship fund that was referenced in the application materials?
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable question. So it, it remains to be seen. So essentially by, um, increasing from five to 10%, uh, the margin is gets tighter. And so, uh, as the margin gets tighter, the availability of, uh, I think that we projected five percent of net, uh, revenues, um, and so that obviously would shrink in a, a small amount, but because, uh, the program's going to be essentially giving free service, uh, uh, through providing a lower rate of Medicaid, um, the, the margins are, are going to be a little bit tighter. So, yeah, there'll be a slight reduction in that.
Okay.
Amount, not the, not the percentage.
Mm-hmm. Um. How do you anticipate sound? Can, can I just refer to it as sound or would you prefer?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Uh, how will, how do you anticipate sound managing potential increases in demand for charity care above what is currently anticipated?
Well, I, I, I think it remains to be seen, uh, what the capacity is really going to be of the facility. Um, and in terms of charity care, um, we, we would have to set up a waiting list, um, for, for free care beyond what we have. Again, this is not a nonprofit. It doesn't have any endowments. It doesn't, uh, receive any charitable contributions. This is, uh, out of, uh, the owner's pockets. Um, so until it's up and running and, you know, it takes a while to get up and running. It takes, it takes a while to recoup the initial investment. It takes a while to, uh, start collecting uh, insurance payments. Um, so there, there's that burden that has to be overcome before we'll, we'll have an idea of what the, uh, the revenues, the, uh, in net revenues are going to be.
Okay. Um. Do you have any understanding as to how the scholarship fund will be administered and what criteria will be used to determine eligibility? Will it be sort of like a first come, first served sort of thing?
I, I think, uh, we submitted a charity care policy that outlines, um, I don't have it in front of me, um, you know, what the requirements are, that I think it was, uh, 200% of federal poverty level. Um, and, uh, it's, it's approved by the executive director. Um, you know, I, I think in reality, these, look, these are guys that want to help people. And, uh, if there are people that are motivated and, uh, start out be, being able to pay for some of their treatment or their insurance runs out, um, and they want to help continue them, then they will, uh, provide some scholarship to the extent that they can.
Okay, I, I apologize. I must have missed, missed that.
And I'm happy to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, I'm happy to provide just a, a base site to that. So that's located at attachment eight is the charity care policy and it's Bates number one sixty to one sixty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um. So I know you provided a revised financial worksheet, uh, in the pre-file. I was wondering if you could speak generally to how the larger anticipated Medicaid volume might impact the projected financials of sound recovery?
If you'll just allow us a second, we're just going to put the, um, that revised worksheet. I'm assuming you were referring to exhibit N? That we submitted?
Yes.
Okay, the witness has that in front of him.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Um, give me a minute. I'll try to figure this out. It's going to be tough to answer your question here, uh, though. It's time to really study the, the, uh, previous one and this one, but, um, I mean, I think that we, uh, it, it looked like we, uh, were doubling the, uh, revenues from, from Medicaid. Um, and the margins, uh, dropped down a little bit, but there's still and it's some margin, 11% first year, 15%, 15% going forward. So, you know, it's, uh, it's lower than most competitors, um, uh, manage, um, but it, it, uh, it, it's enough to cover costs and, uh, start to recover some of the, um, initial allowance. And so, but so it'd be viable. Um, it would be, it would be great if the, uh, margins were a little higher, especially with a small organization like this. Um, but it's, it's sufficient to, to absorb, uh, 10%. Uh, and that, and the 10%, of course, is going to be, um, projected that as a blend of I O P and O P, um, services.
Okay. Um. Do you think you would be able to provide, uh, projected utilization per town in the P S A?
Kind of think, did we not already do that? Um. Uh, if, 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 well, obviously, you know, if we haven't already done that, uh, I, yes, certainly we can, uh, you know, extrapolate by population.
Okay. Um.
And that's a town in the P S A.
Right. I, I don't recall seeing that in the application. It may be there. Um, so if you have provided already, just, you know, indicate where it is on the record. And if you haven't, then I think we would appreciate that as a late file.
Sure, will do.
Um, going back to the five percent, 10% distinction, um, Sound said that the five percent was not intended as either a limit or quota, but rather a likely minimum of who will actually present themselves for services.
Yes, that's right.
So would the same apply to the 10% now that you've increased it?
Uh, yes, yeah, I think so. We, we really don't know, um, who was going to come in the door. Um, I think we were, you know, just indicating that we were willing to make a reasonable adjustment. And again, a projection, um, that, you know, well, it was, uh, to considerably higher than, uh, similar project. And I understand we, we can't, we're not supposed to compare, uh, you know, one, one application is not the same as another, but, um, there were 12 of them and I wrote 10 of them. So I know that they're, they're pretty much the same, uh, uh, applications, um. But, you know, y- yes, it's, uh, uh, o- open to, I mean, may, we may, uh, take more in, but, uh, I wouldn't, you know, want to commit to, uh, a minimum of, uh, much higher than that, you know? And, uh, I don't know that we're in a position, anybody is in a position to commit to, uh, minimum percentage, but, um, if we were able to serve more, I, we would serve.
Um. So, similar to the question that I asked earlier about, um, the charity care policy, would, would there come a time or would there come a point where if you had too many Medicaid patients seeking your services, you would have to place them on some sort of waitlist or, or redirect them elsewhere?
Well, yeah, I mean, there are, there are certainly other services there, uh, there are non- nonprofits in Bridgeport, uh, that, uh, receive public funding and are set up. I think, obviously, we would, uh, in fact, you know, I, um, I've gotten some feedback from some other providers who are, uh, you know, concerned that we're going to be taking their Medicaid clients away from you. You know, so, um, we don't want to do that. We don't want to put any nonprofits, uh, in, in jeopardy. Um, but, you know, that would be the first thing that we want to do is make sure people get the care. You need to, uh, respond when they're ready. And, uh, there, there are a number of providers in, in Bridgeport for certain that, uh, uh, can take them. So that would be the first choice. I, waiting lists, uh, I don't like waiting lists. People don't do well on waiting lists.
Okay. Um. Does Sound have any sort of plans for achieving the projected Medicaid numbers? Or is it just, as you said, whoever comes through the door, comes through the door and they will be served?
Well, uh, in my experience, what happens when a new organization opens up and the word is, gets out that this new place accepts Husky, Medicaid, all of the other providers steer everybody towards them.
Okay.
That's just how it works.
Like, you don't have any doubts that, that, that number will be achievable?
I do not have any doubts.
Okay. Um. Will payer source be a factor in determining access to either the P H P, I O P or O P components of Sound?
Yeah, so certainly with the P H P, that's, uh, that's a little trickier. Um, depending on the plans, some plans will not cover it. Um, and so, um, it, it's going to be a little tricky, even with those who have commercial insurance. Um, or they may have used up their, uh, benefits, um, and, uh, need to pay out of pocket. So I think in that sense, yeah, P H P can be a little tricky. I O P, uh, you know, I think, uh, the benefits are a little easier to, um, collect. Um, so I, I mean, we certainly aren't, uh, going to be saying, well, we can't take this, uh, person because, uh, um, we, we have too many I O Ps or, um, you know, they, they have any, uh, limits and we, we're not going to reject people because, uh, um, you have, uh, s- some people that are paying lower rates or whatever, but.
Okay, so you, you don't anticipate that, like, the 10% Medicaid that you're protecting will be all P H P or all I O P or all?
It's, it's, um, it would be I O P and O P for the Medicaid.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, clearly, yeah, the P H P rate for, uh, in Medicaid is just completely untenable.
Okay. Um.
And frankly, you know, in, in terms of the model I described, um, you, you know, the availability of, um, you know, supportive sober housing for, um, folks on Medicaid is, is extremely limited. So they would, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have that as a, as a resource, not a requirement, but preferable. But, uh, the, the rate is absolutely, uh, unrealistic.
So you mentioned a few minutes ago that, that P H P is often not covered by insurance?
It, it, it's not always covered by insurance, um, and by, by, by all policies. Uh, and often is lumped in with residential treatment so that if somebody comes through detox and residential, they, they may have burned through that, um, pocket of money in their benefits. Um, it, it, in some policies, it's a different, um, tool than I O P and O P.
Okay, and all right, we, we might, we might come back to that. I, I think I have some additional questions. I just haven't sort of translated them yet. Um. So. I, I guess I, I do have one question. It, so P H P won't be offered to Medicaid, just to, to clarify?
Uh, unless and until D S S, uh, is able to post a rate that comes anywhere near the cost of providing that care, it's, it's going to put us out of business. We, we tested that and, uh, that, that was the case, which is.
So when you say you tested that, you mean you, you did some, some?
Yeah, that, that was, that, that was the table that I referred to, uh, table D, um, yeah.
All right. Um. So on pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine of exhibit A, that's the application. Uh, just let me know when you, you have that pulled up.
We have that in front of the witness.
Okay. Um, so you list fifteen other provider locations in the P S A that offer one or more of P H P, I O P or O P services, um. You do not provide any information with respect to their utilization, though. I assume that's because you have no involvement in their in their operations, so you, you wouldn't have that information?
Well, and, you know, you, a utilization in outpatient is really kind of, uh, a, a, a non, uh, uh, figure, there are no capacities in outpatient. There aren't residential. So for a place to say, well, we're eighty percent, uh, utilization of, of what, you know, um?
So speaking more generally, though, do, do you know whether they those other facilities are at their max? I mean, I, I understand the capacity is, is probably not the best word, but are they maxed out in terms of the services that they're able to provide to the, the patient population?
Uh, I, I don't know that there's any way to, you know, you know, if you call them, they'll, they'll give you an answer, but won't necessarily be accurate. Um, these are all, these are all competitors that are in business buying for clients and buying to make money. Uh, for the most part, except for the nonprofits, but, um, again, there are no, uh, stated capacities if they, um, if, if they have more, uh, clients, like in periods of time such as now, when people are looking for treatment. Um, if they have, um, higher numbers of applicants, they'll open up another group.
Okay. Um. So looking at that town, there are, uh, a number, there, there are ten towns listed um, that don't have any of the proposed services, those being Ansonia, Easton, Fairfield, Milford, Monroe, Orange, Reading, Stratford, Trumbull and Woodbridge. Uh, so why was Bridgeport selected over those locations?
Uh, Bridgeport was, uh, selected because it mostly got availability of, uh, reasonably cost, uh, office space. And, uh, the owner, uh, the managing member, Phil DiGennaro, is a real estate, um, person. And he knows a lot of people and was able to find a suitable location that was, uh, accessible. Um, and, uh, so that was the reason for that selection.
Okay.
Uh, right on the, you know, on the bus line and, uh, accessible.
Um. Did Sound conduct any sort of formal needs assessment to determine whether there is sufficient unmet demand for the proposed services in that area?
Um, not a formal, uh, business assessment. I think, um, this is, uh, this model, this P H P model, um, is only offered by a few providers. Uh, most of these providers you'll see are, um, I O P, the only one that's listed here that has P H P is that has PHP is TOSO, which is a Spanish-speaking service. And so the the door is basically wide open. This, as I said, this is a kind of a new model that's being brought to Connecticut. And so it it's a it it's, I even, I think I even put it in the application. It's a situation of if you build it, they will come. And the other providers, that's exactly what they experienced.
Okay.
It's it's a it's a level of period that really was historically, really was not provided in Connecticut. Because, so I said, eighty-five percent of the services in Connecticut were in the nonprofit sector. And they're they're primarily long-term residential treatment and methadone programs. And there were no day treatment programs per se. It's it's a new, it's a new thing. And so it's it's an emerging model and it's starting to gain popularity. And the outcomes are good. So there are only a few in Connecticut.
Are you familiar with the LifeBridge organization in the Fairfield Bridgeport area?
Sounds familiar. If you could give me a little bit of information about them, they might, they probably should know them, but.
Let's come back to that, I think, in a few minutes. I'll be able to to pull up their their information on E-Lice and and get you there. Like what actual services they're currently providing? So I I am going to want to talk about them briefly in a few minutes, but so I'm sticking with page sixteen. I'm sorry, we were talking about pages thirty and thirty-nine. Going back to page sixteen of the application, sorry about that. So Sound performed an analysis of how the target patient population is currently being served utilizing SAMSA data. It relies on old data from twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. At least based on the the link that was provided. SAMSA obviously has more updated information than that. Would you be willing to update that analysis using more recent information?
Yes.
So we would want that as a late file.
Okay.
Just so that we make sure we have the most current information available.
That's A to B, I think it is, right? Okay.
And it's also written in a in a pretty broad sense with respect to like the state of Connecticut as a whole. Is it possible for you to tailor that analysis a little more towards the greater Bridgeport planning region or Demus Region One?
So this is in terms of the projected need or what what specifically are you looking for?
Yeah, projected need. And the the reason why I'm asking this is like, the the data sort of looks at the state's need for PHP services as a as a whole and then assumes that based on this. And and since there's no PHP provided in Bridgeport, that there is automatically a need there. So I'm just trying to sort of close that gap a little bit.
So this is a real challenge. So, you know, it's asked a number of ways, you know, how many people need PHP versus IOP? There there's there's no available data nationally or in the state or locally to to provide that information. In the response on page seventeen, you see that in terms of determining need, we relied on the Demus-funded Regional Behavioral Health Action Organization did their their needs assessment of that of the area for South Western Connecticut. And they specifically identified as their top priority outpatient services, including partial hospitalization. So I think we relied on the state's funded planning organization to to provide evidence of the need.
Okay. And when was that published? I I seem to recall that being an an old publication, like twenty ten or something.
Yeah, that was the last time that they did the actual needs assessments. Since that time, they they've they're providing more epidemiological data and reporting on their more current activities. They haven't, they they stopped doing treatment needs assessments around that time. All all of them did.
Okay. So to your to your knowledge, there's no real, there's no better way to isolate Bridgeport in in the PSA?
No, not that, no, that's that's it.
Okay. On page forty of Exhibit A. Actually, before we move on, so going back to to LifeBridge. So they offer their their licenses both POKA and substance abuse in the Bridgeport Fairfield area. They have a couple of facilities there. The reason I bring them up is they had a day program in Bridgeport from April two thousand nine to March twenty twenty-one. Which was only a two-mile or eight-minute drive from your proposed location. Our understanding in speaking with DPH is that they voluntarily gave up their license in March of twenty twenty-one. And I was just wondering if you had any understanding as to why they may have closed at that point?
So they're nonprofit, is that right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm surprised that there were any nonprofits that were able to sustain a day treatment program. But it sounds like post-COVID, they may have had some financial challenges. I I I can certainly take a closer look. Because I don't know the organization, although I probably know who runs it and just don't recall. But again, you know, I don't know what funding they were receiving as a nonprofit for day treatment. And you know, there are there, if they didn't have the MHDT license, then they, you know, may not have had a true full partial hospital program. There are, the SUD license allows for checking the boxes of day and evening programs. And those are maybe not as intensive as the PHP programs are. I'm just surmising. I I don't know. They didn't pop up on my search for mental health day treatment license.
They were licensed as mental health day treatment.
Oh, they are, okay.
MHDT.
Well, I could certainly do a little bit of research and provide you with an opinion on that.
So our concern, of course, is that since this one was open for a number of years and then suddenly shut its doors, but maintained its other facilities. Whether that's an indication that it's not a financially viable project for that specific area.
Well, it may be the the organization and not the area.
That's that's very true. So I'm going to think about how we want to address that. I I may ask for some sort of late file. But we'll take a break now, right now, but we we will take a break and I'll think about that and and sort of mull it over with the analysts and then we'll we'll come back to you about that. So turning again to page forty of Exhibit A, the application.
So can I, just for, as I think about your comment, just step back a bit. So again, you know, we're we're talking about twelve to thirteen town region, not just Bridgeport. So the the volume, you know, becoming from, you know, Fairfield County, not just Bridgeport.
I understand that. My expectation, I I don't know this for sure, but my understanding is that well, not my understanding. My my guess or assumption is that their their client base was also not just coming from Bridgeport. But was coming from, you know, a greater PSA. On page forty of the application, Sound stated that there is a denial of need and stigma among this population. How does Sound Recovery anticipate addressing these issues to ensure that it meets its volume projections?
The the stigma is a is a broad general cultural issue that we're we're facing. Denial is part of the disease of addiction. I think what we intend to do is we we will be deploying individuals out into the communities to provide education and information about our services. We'll have a website that will provide information. But much of this is developing relationships with referents who see people who need these levels of care. That's primarily clinicians, individual clinicians. And this also will be fed by step downs from detox and residential programs. Particularly when you're talking about partial hospital. It tends to be more fed by detox programs and residential. A lot of people in Connecticut go out of state to to receive those services. Witness James's experience at a number of treatment facilities outside of the state of Connecticut. And they come back to Fairfield County or the general area. So we anticipate that that's going to be a significant volume. Now, when I talk about the the, we refer to the stigma and denial. Trying to get outreach in into the communities to encourage people to seek treatment who are not currently seeking treatment, that's the most effective tool we would have. We can't change the society culture. It's working very hard to do it itself. There's been a great deal of progress in in reducing stigma. There are efforts on a national level. And there are just federal funding coming into the state of Connecticut to help with that. But we we can't change the culture. We can, one by one, reach out to to people and encourage them to come into treatment.
Okay. Thank you. So statements throughout Sound Recovery's filings seem to indicate that PHP services are the most needed within this PSA. Would you agree with that?
I don't recall saying it was the most needed within. I think that every level of care is needed in the PSA. I think it's one that's that hasn't been really available. That that's more the issue of availability. There are only a few programs in the state of Connecticut that offer that level of care. Those that have opened the door to that level of care are are full. I mean, Turnbridge was the first, I mean, in New Haven. And they've been busting at the seams. Greenwich Recovery Center opened up the PHP and was was full within a short period of time. Lantana anticipates the same thing. They, when they did this in South Carolina, there were no PHP programs. Although there were thirty-five clients served in the whole state of South Carolina, they opened up and they quickly added fifty because they opened up and made it available. So there are only a handful of such programs in Connecticut. As I said, it's very desirable level of care. And it's a, it's a very cost-effective and clinically effective alternative to residential treatment. So we expect that it's going to be well-received.
Why do you think there isn't currently a facility in Bridgeport offering PHP?
I couldn't tell you. There there may be applicants. There are new applicants coming in as we speak, looking to open up PHP in Fairfield County, whether specifically in Bridgeport. I couldn't tell you why nobody has opened up there. I think in in some ways, they look for more rural types of settings. Suburban types of settings. But I I can't speak to why Bridgeport would not have one.
Okay. So I'm I'm going to make an assertion. And I would just sort of like you to react to it when I when I'm done. And my assertion is this, just because there are no PHP programs in Bridgeport doesn't necessarily mean that there is a need for them. It could simply be that the services needed are everything but PHP. So what would your response to that be?
Well, I don't I don't know what that's based on. I haven't seen any studies to talk to that. What I can say again is that the regional Behavioral Action Organization specifically mentioned it as as a needed service along with the other outpatient levels of care. Again, there there's no data available to distinguish between the needs for any of those different levels of outpatient services. But I I I would assert that there there is certainly the need. There's a lack of this service in the area. And it has proven itself to be a desirable level of care that people are attending in in most states at this point.
So we've received some commentary from Demus in recently that there are some facilities that are getting licensed for IOP and OP services. And then simply aren't providing those services. They're providing other services. So are you willing to commit to actually providing those? Or are you just seeking to get licensed for those?
Are you talking about for PHP, that we would get a license for PHP and not provide it?
IOP and OP, not PHP.
No, I think IOP is certainly probably going to have a higher volume in this facility than than Parkville Hospital will. And yes, absolutely outpatient. I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
Okay. Thank you. I only have a couple more questions and then we'll we'll take a break. Sound Recovery talks about forming collaborative agreements with sober homes in the area. Can you comment on what sorts of services these sober homes currently offer?
So there are a number of sober homes that are in the general area. But Sound Recovery, because it believes so strongly in in the model of having a closely affiliated sober living environment or environments, is in the process of leasing leasing a former sober home in Bridgeport right now. Leasing, leasing a former sober home in Bridgeport right now. Um, and that is, that had operated for several years and, and uh stopped serving. Um, and so we will be ensuring that we have that close connection. Um, we. Haven't reached out yet to form any kind of formal agreements with the sober living uh. Environments, but uh, I'm very aware of uh Connecticut Association of Recovery Residents. Um, and uh, I know most of the owners um, and will. Look to develop those uh referral networks. We, you know, we have to be sure we're going to be able to be opening up first.
I don't want you to commit to anything, but do you have any understanding as to where geographically this, the. Sound Recovery's sober home would be in relation to this proposed facility?
It's on Brooklawn Avenue in Bridgeport.
Okay.
It, it would not be owned by SOLO Sound Recovery, it would be owned by another uh company.
Okay. And the, the sober homes in the area, do you happen to know if any of them offer PHP, IOP, or OP services? I, not PHP obviously, but IOP or OP?
I, I'm not aware of any in the immediate area that. Uh, offer them. And they can't offer it as part of their um. Recovery residents that would have to have a separate, you know, facility. I'm the only one I'm aware of. The nearest one I'm aware of is Turnbridge in New Haven. That also has a treatment facility uh affiliated with it. Um, and then outside of a place in Greenwich, um, I mean, I could. Look around and ask around, but I'm not aware of any offhand.
Okay. So at this point, I think it makes sense to take, let's say, a ten minute break. So we'll come back around, let's say, ten fifty.
Right.
Um, and again, a reminder to everybody who's here that. We will stop the recording, but the audio and the visual may still be visible or heard. So. Please turn your audio and visual off. Um, and we will come back at ten fifty. Thank you. And it looks like. Okay, uh, welcome back. For those just joining us, this is uh the Hearing in Sound Recovery Services LLC. Docket number twenty-four dash three-two-seven oh two dash CON. Uh, we had most of the technical portion up until now. I do have some additional questions for. Uh, the applicant's witnesses, but before I get into that, Attorney Nolan wanted to make some remarks. Uh, about one of the late files. So I'm going to turn it over to her at this time.
Sure. And I'm not even positive that we had agreed that this was going to be a late file, but I wanted to state our position on the record. Um, with regard to the LifeBridge organization that was previously operating in the proposed service area. Um, I would object to any sort of late file that's asking the applicant to. State a position as to why that organization, which is not at all affiliated with Sound Recovery. Closed its stores. We have no personal knowledge of that. And any sort of statement we would, we were to put on the record would be. Purely speculation. And I don't think it's appropriate um for us to be speculating. On why that organization that we are not at all affiliated with closed. Um, and so I would object to us um, to, to an order that. Directs us to late file something about, you know, essentially we have no knowledge of.
I, I will sustain the objection. Um, I, I wasn't planning to. Make a, a late file in that regard. So, uh, but I do appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
So. I will ask a cou- couple more questions and then I will turn it back over to you, Attorney Nolan. Um. So Exhibit P. That's that spreadsheet that we uploaded um, a couple days ago that had Durham, when it wasn't supposed to include Durham. Uh, we have corrected that and rerun the numbers. Um. The. Total Medicaid count percentage for the PSA. Uh, is thirty-five percent. And the twenty-four percent, which is the, the adult Medicaid count percentage, eighteen plus. Uh, would jump up a little bit as well. So. I know that we're going to file a corrected version of this, but given. You know, tho- those sort of uh rounded numbers, uh. Do you have any response to that Exhibit P? Uh, that you would like to make at this time, or would you prefer to reserve until uh after the hearing?
Uh, I, I think, you know, we can speak generally as to Exhibit P as it is currently filed, but we'd like the opportunity to review the revised numbers. As corrected um prior to, you know, uh, uh, we have to see it first. But I'm, I'm happy to let Mr. Rockholtz uh comment on Exhibit P as we have it on a general matter. With the understanding that we'll be able to supplement those comments uh when we receive the revised version.
Understood.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's usable in our major. So I think, you know, originally we responded to the. Challenge that there was a uh um higher uh poverty rate. And that we responded that the poverty rate in the PSA was about ten percent, which is the same as the state. And we're, we're viewing this as a. Um, a regional, not just a Bridgeport um uh project. And so I thought we responded to that fairly. And I think that, you know, particularly in light of the other dozen. Uh, nearly identical applications that uh responded similarly or not quite as uh. As strongly as we did. Um, this is an introduction of another way of viewing uh the PSA and who's in the PSA. I'm not, I'm not aware of any specific statute that talks about the requirement that we. Um, meet um, the, the uh volume of Medicaid clients in the population. And that hasn't certainly been applied to any of the pre- other previous applicants. So. I don't know really how to respond to that. We uh, we did our estimate of the impact if we were to. Provide our services to twenty-five percent Medicaid and we would not be able to do business.
Okay. Thank you. And the last question I have is uh. In the, on page twelve of the application, uh, Sound Recovery indicates that it's in the process of developing a referral agreement with Bridgeport Hospital. Um, I was just wondering if you were able to provide an update on that?
Well, we, we have not yet uh gotten a secure or written agreement, but we tend to. Okay, uh, we, we, I know, I know that's something that we uh need to have for licensure and so we will have it certainly by then.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney Nolan, did you have any questions that you would want to pose to either Mr. Rockholtz or uh either of the DeGeneres?
I do not. I, I will save my comments um for the end and um, I'm, I'm happy to um turn it, turn it back over to, to OHS.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier, I do need like a few minutes just to talk through late files with um. The analysts, because I haven't been tracking those. Um, so let's come back at eleven-ten. Um. So far, we don't have anyone signed up to make public comment. If anyone is listening who would like to make public comment, um, please sign up in the chat. And we will take you uh when we come back. Um, you're also free to submit written public comment to CONcomment@ct.gov. Um, so I will see everyone back, let's say, eleven-ten and we will wrap things up.
Great.
Uh, welcome back. This is uh. A hearing concerning the CON application filed by Sound Recovery Services LLC, docket number twenty-four dash three-two-seven oh two. Dash CON. Sign up for public comment has been from nine AM until now in the Zoom comment section. Uh, right now, there are no public co- comment signups. So. Uh, anyone who would wish to submit public comment is still free to do so uh within the next seven. Seven days, seven calendar days. Uh, it can submit those in writing to CONcomment@ct.gov. But we are going to move past the public portion uh of today's hearing. And we are going to return back to uh the applicants themselves, or the applicant itself. So I wanted to discuss the late files at this time. Um. The first one that I have and. Uh, I invite discussion on this uh if necessary. The first one I have is to provide projected utilization per town in the PSA.
Yes, um, we are happy. We, we can agree to pay for that. That's no problem.
Okay. Uh, number two, I have uh updated SAMSA data. For those pages in the application that I referenced, I believe it was pages fifteen and sixteen. And, and the analysis that was conducted on. Use it utilizing that SAMSA data.
Um, I will just caveat to the extent that updated data is available, we can agree to provide that and, and update the analysis.
Okay. Related to that. If there are any other, this, this will be number three. And this is one that we didn't specifically discuss earlier, but I think it's important. Um, so if necessary, we can have a discussion now. Um, any other data that you think separately demonstrates the need for each of the proposed services? Those being PHP, IOP, and OP. Uh, given the need, given the existence of the other providers in the PSA. So that could be any data that, any data sources that, that you think might be relevant. Um, and we are. Specifically interested in that, uh, given the reliance on IOP and OP um. For this application.
You're right. Can you, can you clarify what you mean in terms of reliance?
We, so we went into this hearing today with the understanding that. Recovery or Sound Recovery was focusing its efforts on PHP. That, that goes back to one of my earlier questions. Now it appears that PHP, IOP, and OP are going to be sort of looked at. Uh, in a more holistic fashion, like they're, they're, it's, those are going to be focused on as well. It's not just going to be PHP. Uh, so our goal is to ensure that. To the greatest extent possible, there is a need for IOP and OP services in the area. Uh, given Mr. Rockholtz's comment earlier that. You know, the existing providers in the area could just add another group if necessary. Um. So. You know, that's, that's a concern that we have. Like, do we actually need this additional facility? For IOP and OP if these other facilities can just add another group?
Can I just confer with Mr. Rockholtz briefly before I state my position?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like to go off record, that's fine as well. Um, if you want a few minutes to discuss.
Well, uh, just before I do that, are, are those the three late files? Because um, if there are any others, then I'm happy to, you know, we can address them all at once.
There, there was one more. It was uh. If you think it's appropriate, or if you would like a response to corrected Medicaid table exhibit S that we will be filing. After the hearing.
Okay, if we could just take two minutes um, so I can discuss with Mr. Rockholtz um, the late files and then um, we can come back on. I just. Want to confer with him for just a moment.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can stop the recording. Welcome back again. Uh, this is a hearing regarding Sound Recovery Services uh application for a new. Uh, behavioral health facility in the Bridgeport area. It's docket number twenty-four dash three-two-seven oh two dash CON. Um, we just took a few minute breaks for uh, a few minute break for the applicant to discuss with. Uh, her counsel, his counsel. I am. Really bumbling my words. I apologize. Um, the uh, the late files. So now we are back on record and um. Attorney Nolan, I will turn it over to you at this point.
Sure. So um, we were discussing uh late file number three, in which. The office has asked for any other data we feel separately demonstrates a need in the P- PSA specifically in reference to IOP and OP services. Um, we can agree to um produce, or you know, to produce a late file. To the extent that data is available um as to those specific. Services, we do not feel particularly confident that such data does exist. Um, but we will endeavor to look and we will provide it if, if there is available and relevant data to provide.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, did you have any comments on the rest of the uh late files?
Uh, no, I, I think I made my comment as to number two, which similarly to the extent that updated SAMSA data exists, we, we will provide it.
Okay, perfect. So. I think we're all set with the late files then. Uh, Attorney Nolan, uh, did you have any additional questions that you wanted to ask of your witnesses before you gave a closing remarks?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, so uh, oh. The late files, how long do you expect uh you will need in order to get those back to us?
Um, can we say ten days?
Sure.
Great.
And I always say, if you need additional time, that's fine as well, but most applicants are eager to move the process along. So. Uh, ten days is fine, but if you do need more time, just let us know.
That's, that's all right. There goes the weekend.
So you can make your closing remarks now, whenever you're ready.
Sure. Um, and, and I will be brief, um, because I think we've discussed many of these issues throughout. Um, Sound Recovery has proposed this PHP, IOP of the OP facility to serve not just the Bridgeport area, but the fifteen. Or so towns in the proposed service area. Um, this is a for-profit organization. They're seeking to invest their own money. They're not asking for any state assistance. Um, they have. Seen in their own personal experiences and through the data provided that there is a need for these services in the area. Um, and would like to invest their own money in order to meet that need. Um, we believe that we have demonstrated that need sufficiently under the statutes. Um, and the Demus funded RBHAO study, which is attached at attachment four and Bates number beginning at zero-nine-six. Identifies under priority number one as PHP and IOP uh facilities in the region. Uh, we would also uh state that we are committed to providing IOP and OP. Um, we do not intend to be a facility that would be licensed for them and then not provide them. And in fact, that is where. We anticipate the Medicaid volume would come from, um, because we don't propose to provide. Uh, the PHP service to Medicaid individuals. Um. The statute focuses more on duplication of services rather than a, a lack of services in the area. The statute focuses more on duplication of services rather than a, a lack of services in the area. Um, and at the end of the day, OHS should want to license financially viable facilities. Um, as we've demonstrated, we are committed to doing our fair share to serve the Medicaid population. In a financially viable way, um, and in fact, General Statute nineteen A dash six. Thirty-nine sub A sub four requires the applicant to demonstrate financial feasibility. And to do so, uh, to increase the Medicaid volume any higher to match the. Propo- or the, the Medicaid population in the. Prop- proposed service area would simply make the business not financially viable and in turn would result in there being no services provided. Um, so if the option is some services or no services, we obviously think that we would much rather provide the services. We very much want to provide the services in this area and through this uh facility. Um, we. Would, as I said, we are very committed to this mission, this is a personal mission for the owners, we have. Signed on one of the best experts in the, I'll say, country, um, in order to assist them in doing so. And we would ask the office to approve the application pursuant to. Um, General Statute nineteen A dash six thirty-nine, and we would be happy to answer any other questions that the office has.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for attending today. Um, thank you especially to Mr. Rockholtz and Mr. DeGeneres and Mr. DeGeneres and you as well, uh, Attorney Nolan. Um, a reminder again that written public comment can be submitted up to seven days from now at CONcomment@ct.gov. Um, I am going to be adjourning this hearing, but the record will remain open until closed by OHS after receipt and review of the late files. Uh, so thank you again to everyone and uh I look forward to seeing you all again in the future.
Thank you, Your Honor, sir.